The Monday, May 4th, 2015 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call their roll, please?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Schonheider.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Adelman.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you, Biddy. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight, reports of city officers. Comments by mayor, I have none this evening. Item number two, comments by city manager, Bob Kyler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to reserve my comments through the end of the agenda, please.
Yeah, I think that's how we all feel. Item number three on the agenda, comments by council members. We do have an item, approval of the comprehensive fiscal plan for FY 2016 presented by George Pandeleon, Finance Committee Chairman, and Elizabeth Halliwell, Director of Finance.
Thank you, and Elizabeth will, has a brief PowerPoint presentation to share with us just a few slides with a very high-level summary of the fiscal plan.
Thank you, Chairman, Mayor, City Council. This evening culminates a process that has been going on for eight months. This is just a slide that shows the calendar. Typically, the first four months of our fiscal year are spent auditing the prior year's financial activities, and then we jump right into the budget process in September. And this just shows the timeline and process that we utilize each year for the annual budget. Some highlights of the FY 2016 budget. The total budgeted expenses for FY 16 are $84,171,325. That compares to FY 15 estimated actual expenditures being an increase of just .4 percent, so less than half of 1 percent increase overall in expenses over the actuals for the current fiscal year. The budget includes significant capital initiatives for the coming fiscal year, including the Eastside train station renovation with over $1 million in grant funding towards that project, the anticipated beginning of the Laurel and Western Avenue redevelopment, continued work on the city's multi-year program for addressing the Emerald Ash Bore, $290,000 is budgeted towards that program for the coming year, and continued work on the Telegraph Road Station pedestrian underpass project, again heavily funded by grant funding with nearly $1.5 million in grant funding towards that project. It also includes additional capital improvements of $6.1 million. Some of those highlights include almost $1.8 million in street, sidewalk, and bridge improvements, facility improvements of $680,000, the majority of which is the roof at the recreation center, and $1.6 million in water and sanitary sewer system improvements. So significant capital improvements projected for the coming fiscal year. This slide provides a very high-level overview of expenses for FY 16 compared to the estimated actual for FY 15, shows the dollar amounts in millions, and the percentage change between '16 and '15. Some notes, the 13.7 percent increase in the capital project funds is primarily the beginning of the Laurel and Western Avenue redevelopment. The 89.3 percent reduction in motor fuel tax is a timing issue. Every third year, the street improvement program is funded from motor fuel tax; the other two years, it's in the capital project funds. 7.9 percent increase in Deer Path Golf Course is primarily a budget mechanism. It's because food and beverage operations at the golf course are now reported gross instead of net. And then a 5.8 percent increase in fire and police pensions, mostly driven by pension benefit and pension benefits required under those statutory programs. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. The general fund budget for FY 16 is $32.5 million, so it represents nearly 40 percent of the total citywide budget. This graph just depicts the major revenue sources and expense classifications. You can see that the primary funding source in the general fund is property tax at 52 percent. And then the FY 16 general fund expenses are extremely personnel-driven, with 69 percent of the general fund expenses being personnel-related. That's both salary and benefit costs for city employees. The city incorporates long-term forecasting in its annual budget process. This is the five-year fund balance forecast for the general fund. It shows the projected revenues and expenses for FY 16, as well as the following four years, and the projected fund balances for each year. And then this bottom part here does reflect the changes made by the Finance Committee on April 20th, which is increasing the fund balance minimum target to 35 percent of revenues, and setting aside $1.2 million in fund balance for the projected replacement of the city's financial system. What you see at the bottom is the graph of the change in net before capital, projected for the five-year planning period. And as you know, we continue to address that projected deficit. It's driven by expenses growing at a faster rate than revenues, but that's the importance of long-term forecasting so we can be proactive. And the red line here is how that line changes should the state's proposal to reduce income tax to municipalities come to fruition. Finally, the last slide just shows the cost of city services to an average household. We began doing this last year. It's a five-year summary. It's intended to show the changes in rates driven by the city's fee schedule and tax levy ordinance. So the two yellow highlights are what are changing in FY 16, and that's the property tax levy and the water charge. So it's projected that the average household will pay $74 more in FY 16 than FY 15 for basic city services. It's a very brief summary, but you've all received the full budget book. That will be available on the website tomorrow, provided it's approved this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Elizabeth?
I have a couple of comments. One, there have been a number of requests from the city council during the course of the year for certain information in certain formats, and if you look in the budget book, the most frequently requested thing has been a place where it all kind of is brought together. So you can see all the expenses, all the, you know, it had a certain summary level, but still, in a reasonable level of detail. And if you, if you open the budget book to page 26 and 27, that's where it is. It's, the title of it is "Fund Balance Analysis," and it goes through all the funds, and all the expenses, and all the revenues in one, in one slide, basically. So if you, if you want to look at one high-level summary, it's quite, quite logical and easy to follow. So I, it's really nice to be able to, as a businessperson, to be able, you know, as a, as a, municipalities work in fund balance accounting, and it's, and everything's sort of Balkanized, and we all in the business world like to see the whole totality, and this is, we finally got an exhibit that does that, and I think if you wanted to pull two pages out of the book and carry it around with you, those would be the two pages I would recommend. The other thing I'd like to do is just, is just point out that Elizabeth and Diane have done a spectacular job of putting this all together, and of gathering up all of our input, and reflecting that input in, in this package. It's very, it's very comprehensive, it's pretty user-friendly, even though it's kind of thick. I got mine in electronic format, so I don't have to carry it around. But, but thank you, Elizabeth, and Diane's not here, but pass along our-
We'll do that.
-deep thanks.
Any other comments? I mean, I'd just like to make a point in a little bit to George's comment. I'd like to congratulate Bob, you, your department heads, and really every member of city staff. I mean, we continue to run this community, you run this community so well, and to look up there and see that our budget year over year is increasing less than one-half of 1 percent. There's really no change in city services, the systems have been running well. In fact, I think a lot of our services have improved, and I think a lot of those, a lot of that really falls on your leadership, your department head's leadership, and every member of city staff. And on behalf of the community, we're very grateful, so thank you. Thank you. If there's no other comments, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the comprehensive fiscal plan for FY 2016.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the annual vendor approval, also presented by Elizabeth Halliwell.
A few years ago, the city code was revised to provide a mechanism for the city council to review certain categories of vendors each year. In your packet, you've received the requested list from departments this year with a comparison of the last four years, so you can see how those have trended over time. These are vendors who have an ongoing relationship with the city. They provide services on an ongoing and unspecified basis, and so you can see the recommended amount estimated in FY 16 by vendor. But it's important to note that any single purchase from any of these vendors over $20,000 will still come to the city council for approval. So this is just a preliminary approval, and anything under $20,000 could be done during the year, but anything over 20 would be on a city council agenda.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion for approval of the attached list of vendors.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, approval of the FY 16 Personnel Policies and Practices and the FY 16 Pay Plan, presented by Dushay Kalmar, Director of Human Resources.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, each year we review our policies, and you adopt them as part of the budget process. They're reviewed by our labor attorneys. Last year, we, they were given a complete cover-to-cover review. This year, we did more of a spot review on the things that we needed to add. The primary changes for this year were required by law, the major changes, and they include the Pregnancy Discrimination and Accommodation Acts components, and then also the addition of same-sex marriage. I, in your packet, you had a list of the various things that were changed. Again, most of those are because of those items, and those are either state or federal laws. The Pregnancy Accommodation Act went into effect January 1 of this year, so these are all things that we had to add to our program. Also, the modest change in the longevity pay, the last year of the longevity pay, does comply with what we have previously had you approve or asked you to approve in our union contracts. So then, as far as the pay plan is concerned, that went up, the ranges went up, the two-and-a-half percent, which you directed us to back in March. So if I have any questions specifically, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Dushay? Seeing no questions, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the FY 16 Personnel Policies and Practices and the FY 16 Pay Plan.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, appointment of Chapman and Cutler, LLP, to service the city's bond council, presented by George Pandeleon and Elizabeth Halliwell.
I think I'll, once again, let Elizabeth-
She left her-
Or I should have said Elizabeth Halliwell. Provide a summary, right.
Thank you, Chairman. The city has a practice of looking at long-term service providers on a regular basis. This year, we elected to issue an RFP for bond council services. The current bond council has served since 2000. We thought it was an appropriate time to take a look at the market. We did select, we had four volunteers serve on a selection committee. Chairman Pandeleon served on that, legal committee chairman Ray Bushman, city manager Kylie, and myself. We received nine proposals in response to the RFP, evaluated those proposals, and selected three finalists for interview. After the personal interviews, the selection committee came together and made a unanimous recommendation for the city council to consider appointment of Chapman and Cutler as bond council going forward. They have a very large presence in the Chicago area, a very large public finance group, and received very favorable reviews.
I guess I'd also point out that they have an extremely long history that we were trying to put together the timeline of what, what caused them to cease to be the city's bond council. I don't remember the exact dates, but it was something like 50 years, you know, up until the early '80s, if I remember correctly, that they, that Chapman and Cutler was the city's bond council, and, and then it went to two other firms.
Sidley.
Sidley, and also Cat Mutian, right. And it just, they're probably the right people for Lake Forest, and, you know, in the long, in the long run. And there was some discussion that there may have been some sort of a conflict between a city council, sitting aldermen, who I think was a partner at Chapman and Cutler, so that may have been the reason, that's the closest we could come to finding out why they had been replaced, but at this point, they, they came forward with a very compelling proposal, and so time to sort of go back to home base, if you will.
Are we going to continue to review these services periodically? Because I commend you for undertaking this review. I think it's important with, not just our legal services, but, you know, in general, to do these periodic assessments.
I mean, there is a value in continuity in these things, but every once in a while, you do need to take a step back, and so I think Elizabeth has been very proactive about doing that, and it's another, another point of strong performance on her part. She essentially drove this. This is not, we didn't, you know, I didn't get together with the head of Legal Committee and decide we should go do this. This is something Elizabeth felt needed to be done, and Bob as well, so.
Just because you reviewed doesn't mean it changed either, but I think it's, it's a good idea, so, thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh.
Comment?
I have, not on this.
On this? Okay. Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion for the appointment of Chapman and Cutler, LLP, as bond council for the city of Lake Forest.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Next item on the agenda, the opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items.
Actually, I want to, George had comments, isn't, as Alderman-
Okay.
And then I would like to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
Before number, before the next one, if that's okay.
Before number four.
Yes.
Would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, that's okay.
Absolutely.
I've got just a couple of things to say. First of all, I wanted to mention that the last meeting, I went, spoke to the process of bidding and things like this on the LED light bulbs. I had a conversation with Dan Martin, who actually left me a voicemail before, but it was a blocked number, and I usually don't listen to those for a few days. And he had a, he did everything perfectly, and I was unaware of it, and he made an attempt to let me know that, and I would just like to, just say thanks for all that listening and doing it right, and, and that sort of thing. And the fact that I misread it was my mistake, and I didn't want to cause him any embarrassment. So, sorry about last meeting. And secondly, this is my last meeting as an alderman, and I just wanted to make a comment, and propitiously timed after the finance. I have, I'm very proud to have served as an alderman, and am really proud of the city staff, and it's a, it's a fantastically well-run organization. But I would like to suggest that somehow, in spite of the fact that we've held the line on taxes, in spite of the fact that we're so proud of our ranking as a low property taxes, and we've held the line at .4 percent increase, I would like to suggest that we have our, anecdotally speaking, our city streets on less than a 10-year rotation, that we don't have to choose between the second and fourth ward as to who's going to get most of the flooding in the basements fixed. And, and put some of these capital projects, and the money that it takes to finish these projects, up there with the same expectation that we have for life safety issues, protection, snow plowing, these sorts of things. And if there's been a constant here, it's that we're not wasting any money, that I, from, from my point of view. The other constant is, is the only thing that we're not in front of in Lake Forest are the capital maintenance projects. And it's millions of dollars, and we stagger them in, and we pace them in, and we do one heck of a good, we do one heck of a job. But I would, I would suggest, as I leave city council, that there's a process or a procedure that's somehow developed to accelerate these capital projects in a way so that we're not wasting money, but instead of having 10 streets to repave and 15 more that want to be repaved, that we're paving 15 and taking two off the list because they're good enough to last another year. And just to get ahead of that curve a little bit, I think would mean a lot to this city, and especially the affected people. So whether it's flooding, or resurfacing, or the other, those are easy ones to talk about in a public meeting, but I would just like to say that, I would like to see some of our capital projects that aren't part of, you know, matching funds and things like that, that we really do need to take advantage of, given a priority, and, and given some more money to, to bring that level of the city up. Sidewalk repairs, and, you know, those types of things that we tend to see as not as critical, but, but really reflect the, the high quality of living that we should, that we, that we should expect here. And other than that, I just wanted to say, as a, as a moment here, that it's been a real honor, and I'm, I'm very proud to have served, and it's a heck of a group of people that we, that are volunteers, and I, and one heck of a city staff. I've, I can't imagine, can't picture a weak link, can't imagine anybody being any better. So, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Opportunity for citizens now to address the, which you will be in about an hour. For citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to come forward, please, sir? Come up, state your name and your address, please.
David Fontana, 701 West Woodland, Lake Bluff, Illinois. I've been here at the last two city council meetings. For the people who weren't here, I see a lot of faces that weren't. I own Dave's North Shore Towing in Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, Holland Park. I have approached the council about one company getting over six figures in the towing and not rotating the list like every other police department on the north shore. I want to let you know I did get this letter two days after the meeting. It was undated, so I don't know when it was written. There are a few things I wanted to say about it. You know, for one thing, my company's never been suspended from any list for any wrongdoing. It says in here that Roundout's done your towing for 30 years. Well, in that 30 years, H&amp;H backed up Roundout for 15 years, and so did I. I noticed in here that it said that Roundout doesn't charge the city for towing. I don't know if that's why they get the big contract, but while I was backing her up, I know I've done many toes of city vehicles, and the bill was sent in. So that brought to my attention, I forgot to say that that's another contract that's being given that no other tow companies have the opportunity to get. I've personally done at least 5,500 police calls, never had a problem, never had anything stolen out of cars, always did things the right way. This is a big contract. I don't understand why the city of Lake Forest Police Department will not rotate it like every other police department. It's not right, it's not the way it should be, and it's a high-six-figure contract that shouldn't be done that way. Again, I wanted to bring it to your attention again, since nobody called me, but I think I deserve a better answer than this letter I got, which, there's a lot of things in it that are inaccurate, but it's a big contract, and I don't think a city should be able to give that big of a contract, let alone that every other comp, every other police department rotates it fairly. I don't know why Lake Forest won't. That's all I have to say to you this evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, members of the council, as a gentleman indicated, he has been before you a couple of times. Following the last time he was before you, the direction from the council to the staff was, let's look at bidding this out and going forward. Since then, staff has been doing some research, what are other communities do, and began compiling an RFP. I don't know if Carl or Jim want to come forward and just sort of report that we are going through that process, not unlike what we just did for professional services on bond council, and eventually we will be bringing you an actual bid, and that will be clear to all potential bidders as to what they can expect or not expect. But Carl, I'll let you take it from there.
Good evening. Our staff's been working on some changes to that policy for about three months now. We have a rough draft in Mr. Filippini's office, who's reviewing it. Our hope is to have that fixed by the end of May and bring it to you in June for consideration.
Thank you.
Question?
One question for you, officer. That's going to be coming out at the end of May. When, is there a, are we awarding the contract before then?
No, no. It would, once the bids are received back, then they'll be coming to the city council on a future agenda item, and I think you're saying June would be a future city council agenda.
Okay, so the preparation of this document won't preclude this year's business?
That, well, it will preclude every activity, or all activity, once the contract has been executed and put in place. Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Can I ask a question on that?
Well, unless you want to just go outside, I don't know.
Why, it's directly-
Go ahead. Come on, please come back, back up.
Again, like I said, every other police department rotates it between everybody on their list. I want to, I'd like to know and make assurances that this wouldn't be a contract where it says you have to have a heavy-duty wrecker, because not everybody has one, and I know Wheeling puts it in there where you have to have a heavy-duty wrecker. Most of us have been on the list 20-plus years, we've given great service to this city. I just don't understand why it can't rotate like the rest of the police departments do it. If you check with Holland Park, Highwood, Lake Bluff now does it, Bannockburn, Deerfield, the guys on the list, every call, whether it's a flat tire, a jumpstart, a lockout, it's rotated fairly. I cannot understand why this is being fought so much to just do the right thing. We've all lived here, my son goes to school, my kids go to school here, my whole family lives in Lake Forest. Why not do the right thing, is what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fontana. We certainly will take your comments into consideration as we go through the process. Anyone else? Anyone else care to address the council on non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, items for omnibus vote consideration. There are seven, as we typically do. If any member of the council would like to take one or more individually, we'll do so. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve all seven at the end. Item number one, approval of the April 20, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, the check register for the period March 28 through April 24, 2015. Number three, approval of a resolution recognizing Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital for receiving the American Heart Association, American Stroke Association Award for Quality Achievement and being an honor role elite. Number four, approval of information technology support to be provided in fiscal year 2016 by Client First Consulting Group. Number five, approval of an audit committee recommendation regarding audit fees for fiscal year 2015. Number six, approval of a contract for Everett Park Playground Project. And number seven, ratification of contract amounts from the Chlorey Bike Path Project. Any member of the council wish to take any of those individually? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, item number six is ordinances. First item under that section, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of various actions related to final approval of the Oak Knoll Woodlands Planned Preservation Subdivision. If desired by the city council, grant final approval of the ordinances and grant final approval of the Platte subdivision, I believe, so I believe we'll have two items to approve this evening. And staff contact, and presented by Kathy Cernyak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a-
This is a recommendation that comes to you from the Plan Commission. You have previously seen this development. Just a brief review, just about a year ago, in May of last year, the Plan Commission first heard the presentation of this subdivision. It's a request for both a zone change and for approval of a planned preservation subdivision. The Plan Commission also saw this project in September of 2014, and in October of 2014. They then forwarded a recommendation to the City Council in support of tentative plat approval, and last October, the City Council unanimously approved tentative plat approval, which really gave the developer the direction to move forward with final engineering. Final engineering was submitted to the city in, I believe, February, end of January. In March, the Plan Commission saw this project and recommended final approval of the tentative plat. In October, the City Council did approve first reading of the zone change ordinance. So that is now before you for final approval. The zone change ordinance, which would rezone this property from the current R5 zoning to R4, and also apply the Historic Residential and Open Space Overlay District. The council has also asked to waive first reading and grant final approval of the final development plan ordinance, which approves the final plat of subdivision, and serves as the special use permit, which is required for any planned preservation subdivision. Just a brief review, properties within the Historic and Residential Open Space District can come forward with a request for approval of a planned preservation subdivision, which allows some variation from the requirements of the underlying zoning district. That was established in the 1980s, that provision was established in the code, really in response to the conventional subdivisions that were occurring at a rapid rate throughout the community, particularly on the west side. The planned preservation overlay district allows for the preservation of open space, in some cases woodlands, wetlands, prairies, and in some cases preserves historic structures. The property proposed for subdivision is located north of Conway Farms Road, at the north end of Oak Knoll Lane, Oak Knoll Drive. The Conway Farms Golf Course is located just to the north of the property. The property proposed for subdivision is 30 acres. Just an air photo showing you the existing property. The eastern portion of the property is encumbered by wetlands, and this subdivision was approached from the direction of locating the development on the west portion of the property, and preserving the eastern portion, preserving some wetlands, and handling detention in that area. The overall master plan, which I know this is difficult to read, but you do have a copy in your packet, again, the, the plan proposes development of 16 lots on the western portion of the property. The lots that are proposed range in size from about three-quarters of an acre to just over an acre. The Plan Commission discussed the number of lots, the size of the lots, at length. They did hear a considerable amount of public testimony, questions from the neighbors about whether 16 lots was the right number of lots, whether the size of the lots were appropriate. Through this process, initially, in early discussions, 21 lots were proposed, and on 30 acres, before current regulations regarding stormwater were in place, probably 21 lots could have been developed on this site, likely all at about 60,000 square feet, similar to the conventional subdivision that is located just to the south. The Plan Commission, in response to concerns about lot sizes, did conclude that the community at this point probably has enough acre-and-a-half lots. We certainly have received that input from, from many realtors in the community. Our supply indicates that we have a, a large number of acre-and-a-half lots, and that in fact, the, the size of lots desired is a bit smaller than acre-and-a-half. So this really provides an opportunity to fill what we've heard is a gap in our available lots for sale. There was also discussion about access to this property. This property is accessed off of Oak Knoll Drive, a public road. A private road, Stablewood Lane, wraps around the property to the north and west. Although there was discussion, at the time this, this portion of Conway Farms was developed, that lot was not made a public road, it was retained as a private road. The city is not responsible for resurfacing the road, plowing the road, repairing the road. It is done privately by the Conway Farms Homeowners Association. I believe I've, I've hit most of these. Plan Commission, again, heard this, heard the request for tentative approval over the course of three meetings, talked about zoning, the appropriateness of the overlay district. They did conclude that the R4 zoning was consistent with the comprehensive plan designation for this property. I mentioned density and lot size. Drainage and wetlands were the topic of considerable discussion. Bob Els, Engineering Supervisor, is in the audience, and can speak to that. The Plan Commission, during the course of their meetings, requested that, as a follow-up to the initial traffic study that was completed, a second traffic study be conducted at a different time of year, a different time of day, and those additional data points were reviewed and supported by the city engineer. Again, this, this development does preserve open space. There were neighborhood comments about the location of a walking trail. Ultimately, the walking trail within this subdivision was really reduced in scope and pulled away from the neighboring homes. In response to concerns about buffering existing properties, obviously in the area where there's preserved open space, these properties have a significant buffer, and frankly, not much changed from what exists today. There was concern about buffer areas in this location. A minimum of a 50-foot setback area is preserved, all in this area. The developer did come forward and place a, a preservation easement, preservation open space easement, on the plat of subdivision, assuring that this area will remain landscaped and will remain unbuildable. With that, I would invite Bob Els to, to come up and just give a brief review of drainage, if that would be helpful.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I don't really have a lot to go, to say, except for that the development at this point meets or exceeds all of the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance standards for the drainage, stormwater aspects of any development. The wetlands, there is a large amount of wetlands, as Kathy had indicated. Some of that is being handled on-site mitigation, there is a small portion that will be taken care of off-site. The, as you know, the wetlands approval falls under the jurisdiction of Lake County and the Army Corps of Engineers, depending on the category, they have both on that site. They are still working with Lake County and the Corps of Engineers to come up with the, you know, the final details of that, but that will all have to be finalized and permitted through those agencies before the city could issue a permit for this. Are there any specific questions regarding?
Was any of this land tiled at any time?
Sorry?
Was any of the wetlands tiled at any time? In the, in the past? Drained and farmed?
Oh, drained, tiled? They did do a tile investigation, study in the area. They did find a couple, and those will be, as with any development, they are required to be tied into the new storm sewer in the area.
Bob?
The lots along the southeast side of the road shooting up in a northeastern direction, are all the building sites out of the 100-year floodplain level? All the building levels?
The, the lots, the building pads are out of the floodplain. There are portions of the rear yard which will be impacted, and that is allowed under the Watershed Development Ordinance.
Okay, great.
With the changes that we've seen in regulation, and we talked a little bit about this earlier today, since this is a new development, one of my concerns is that it may impact the older subdivisions to the south of it primarily. Could you offer any insight into how increasing or tightening regulations in one, applied to one region, may impact flows south, south of that development?
Well, certainly. In this particular instance, all of the stormwater flows south to north. So the existing homes below the property line there, all of the runoff, all of the drainage goes to the north. So it is going onto the property to be developed. That's the way it currently works, and that's the way it will continue to, to flow. So there's not going to be stormwater coming back onto the existing lots. Thank you, Kathy. I think that shows that. So presently, it's all going to this property. From there, it goes north to the golf course, it goes east under the railroad tracks, and ultimately to the north branch of the, or I'm sorry, the middle fork north branch of the Chicago River. This particular development, when they do the detention, the high, high wa, not the normal, but the high water level of that detention area is, and I don't remember exactly, it's either five or six feet below the normal water level on those existing lots. So it's down, it's down here, and it's up here, preventing a tailwater situation going back into the existing lots. They're also providing, I believe, five-and-a-half acre-feet additional storage in their pond than is required by the Watershed Development Ordinance. So it's not a case where they're right there at the level to when there is a 100-year event. They have lots of additional storage capacity there.
So existing homes, south or north, should not be negatively impacted, and may actually see an improvement in drainage as a result of this development?
Correct. I don't know if it's really quantified, I mean, the amount of improvement to the homes to the south, but certainly, the water will continue to go to the north, and as I said, there's additional, will be additional capacity for stormwater storage up there. They are taking out one of the old culverts that brings the water to the north, and improving that flow to the north. So certainly, should be a, some amount of improvement for that area.
And one last question, I didn't ask you earlier. The size of the city's storm drainage pipes in this region, in this, in this property, in this development, will they be the same or larger than the surrounding neighborhoods? Has, has the code changed, in other words, for the size of our drain, or have we begun to use larger pipes for drainage?
I'm not sure that's really a code issue, that's just more of a site-specific issue, certainly.
So likely that we would use the same size pipes? Are we, are we upgrading to larger size in general? Is, is, or are we, we have one size that we've used for 20 years?
The minimum pipe size has changed with the iterations of the Watershed Development Ordinance over the years. But again, their size basically based on the engineering calculations that are done site-specific. There is a, a new minimum standard, but the site, the, the actual size will be determined by the specifics of the drainage on that site.
Thank you.
Bob? The piping under the railroad right-of-way, who maintains that to make sure it doesn't get blocked by debris?
The railroad.
They do.
It's their, I won't, I won't say they maintain, I'd say it's their responsibility to maintain it.
Do we throw some eyeballs on it periodically to make sure they're keeping up with it?
Dan Martin says yes.
Okay. And is there a restrictor in there to control the outflow?
Not underneath the railroad tracks.
No, okay. And is there going to be some overland flowage here, or is it going to be piped from the storm inlets in the street right to the right-of-way?
No, it's going into the pond first, and then with a restrictor to the north to the golf course.
Okay, great.
Comments or questions of either Bob or Kathy?
Thank you.
If not, I'd like to ask if there's anyone from the public here that would like to make a comment, or address the council on this matter. Yes, please. Come up and state your name and your address, please.
Dan Seeball, 560 Ivy Court. I'd like to express opposition to this development. It just seems like it's developing land that doesn't need to be developed. The lot sizes are that middle ground that's neither dense nor preserves land or, and wildlife. This is another example of a project similar to Wesley Farmstead, that was about three or four years ago, that that came up for development, was supposed to be turned into winery estates or something like that, and it just never happened because apparently wasn't fiscally sound. This is the kind of development that the coming generations are not interested in. They aren't interested in auto-based, in auto-centric living. They're tending towards the cities, and that's all I want to say on this. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? If not, I'd ask any more discussion amongst the council? If not, I would like to ask for a motion to grant final approval of an ordinance rezoning the 30-acre parcel from R5 to R4, and applying the Historic Residential and Open Space Overlay District.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to waive first reading first, so that should be our first motion in this.
I thought we'd already done that, council?
Yeah. Not for the SUP.
Okay. I, okay. I've got grant final approval of the ordinance, and final approval of the subdivision. So we need to waive first reading for what?
Might I suggest that we take them all at once, but first waive the first reading on the SUP ordinance?
Okay. So as a part of one motion?
The first reading should be waived separately, it's a different vote.
Okay. So then I would ask for a motion to waive first reading on the special use permit?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Abstain.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yeas, zero nay, one abstention.
Okay, thank you.
And now would be appropriate to approve, you can do those all in one motion, all of those actions. I would note that there are some wordsmithing changes that I have to the SUP ordinance that are not reflected in the packet, but nothing that would have a substantive impact.
I take guidance well, counselor, thank you. All right, then I would ask for a motion to both grant final approval of an ordinance rezoning the 30-acre parcel from R5 to R4, and applying Historic Residential and Open Space Overlay District, as well as approve a motion granting final approval of the Oak Knoll Woodlands Planned Preservation Subdivision Platte, and approval of the associated special use permit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Abstain.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yeas, zero nay, one abstention, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Vic, very much. Next item on the agenda, new business, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a revised site plan for the Amberly Woods Commercial Development proposed on 8.5 acres located at the southeast corner of Route 60 and Saunders Road, presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item also comes to you from the Plan Commission. Just a brief look back, last July, the City Council heard a recommendation from the City Council on this project. This is a request for changes to a, to the previously approved overall plan for Amberly Woods. The Amberly Woods site is a 40-acre parcel that is located along the Route 60 corridor, located located at the southeast corner of Route 60 and Saunders Road. In July, you heard a recommendation from the, from the Plan Commission in support of commercial development of this 10-acre site, but a recommendation that the site plan presented at that time not be approved, but instead that you direct that it be modified, subject to a number of conditions. I believe in the write-up, I may have misspoke. The council didn't actually take a vote on the conditions, but the minutes reflect that at the end of your discussion, Mayor Schoenhyder did summarize that the council endorsed, endorses, commercial development of the 10-acre parcel and endorsed the changes to the site plan as recommended by the Plan Commission. Those, those conditions are detailed in your packet. Several months ago, the city was contacted by the owner of the property, letting us know that the petition was still active, that he was still actively engaged in talking with the, the previous developer and, and new development partners as well. Pine Tree came forward, Pine Tree Realty, the new developer or the new development partner, did come forward with a revised plan that was modified in response to those conditions. The key issues that the revisions addressed, setbacks on all sides of the development, both along Saunders and Route 60 road, roads as long, as well as along the adjacent residential development. The site plan modifications addressed the intensity of the development. Two of the original five buildings have been removed from the plan. The two buildings closest to Route 60 are the buildings that were removed, about 8,000 square feet of, of space. The plan responds to the discussion about a cul-de-sac versus a gate and does provide an option for a cul-de-sac that could be constructed at the city's discretion, once the entire Amberly Woods project is built out. Drainage was addressed, and in addition, the city also requested Gee Walt Hamilton, the city's consultant, to conduct a separate study of the drainage issue and provide an overview and, and recommendations on how to address any issues that, that might exist. The revised plan also provides for opportunities into the development to assure success of a retail development, views from Route 60, views from Saunders Road, opportunities for signage, and overall addresses the concern that was raised about general consistency with the character of the community and the character of the Route 60 corridor. The revised site plan does provide for a 100-foot setback of the parking area from the Route 60 right-of-way and a setback of 100 feet for the building that's located closest to Route 60. In the conditions as recommend, as forwarded to the city council by the Plan Commission, the recommendation was that parking be allowed within 75 feet of the right-of-way, so this plan does exceed the setbacks as originally recommended by the Plan Commission. Setbacks have increased on the east side, providing more space from the property line that this property shares with the condo building, assuring that trees on the condo building won't be impacted as they were with the previous plan. The setback along the south property line has also been increased, again, primarily ensuring that the woodland, the preserved woodland area would not be impacted by the development on this adjacent property. The setback along Saunders Road was also increased. One of the earlier plans actually moved the building into the right-of-way along Saunders Road. The Plan Commission did review this petition in April. The Plan Commission recognized that, that their role at this point, since there was a recommendation before the plant, before the city council, was simply to evaluate the revised site plan and provide input to the city council on whether the, the previous conditions, as recommended by the Plan Commission, were met by this revised plan. Because of the, the history of this petition, the petitioners have asked that we bring this forward to the city council at this time, not for any, any formal action. We do recognize that building review board consideration is required, Historic Preservation Commission action is also required, and that we do need to come forward to the city council with an ordinance that would amend the annexation agreement, amend the special use permit, and approve a modified plat of subdivision. But what this is before you tonight for is, is really direction from the city council. You do have a resolution that was provided to you under separate cover that, again, doesn't give any specific approvals, but the petitioner is looking, the developer is looking for some clear direction from the city council as to whether this site plan does address the issues that were previously raised, and looking for direction from the city council on whether they should expend further time, further money on detailing the architectural plans, going before the building review board, and, and addressing the other aspects, including final engineering. Just a, a quick view of a landscape plan, which I also believe is in your packet. If you choose to approve the resolution this evening, and again, the Plan Commission did determine that the revised site plan does meet the previous criteria, then with your direction, positive direction to move forward, then staff would work with Pine Tree to move this forward to the building review board for review of architectural details of the building, massing materials, review of landscape, lighting, and signage, and then move the request for demolition of the existing residence forward to the Historic Preservation Commission. Once those actions are completed, we would come back to the city council with ordinances that would allow you to take final action. I know representatives of, of Pine Tree, Mr. Borzak and Mr. Peters, Pearson, sorry, are in the audience tonight and would be happy to answer any questions. If you choose to do so, be approval, it would be appropriate to approve a motion approving the resolution that you've been provided with.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy?
Couple of questions on drainage. I understand that this proposal is asphalt as opposed to the drainage pavers that we saw previously, and the concept is that there's offset from the, the north end of the property, there's more ponding and water retention on the property. Could you speak to that and just provide a little bit of color?
I see that our city engineer, Dan Strand, just walked in. I'll give him a little bit of background. We are talking about Amberly Woods. But if you could come up and speak to that?
What do I have to say?
He timed that just right. I, I didn't mention to, to Dan to also give you a briefing on the study that his office conducted at the request of the city manager to respond to some issues that were raised by Stonebridge.
Oh, go ahead. I was going to fill the void. Go ahead.
Well, good evening. I'm Dan Strand. I'm with Gee Walt Hamilton. Speaking of the Whole Foods development here, just some of the changes from the initial application that we saw last year versus this. As Kathy mentioned, there's now an asphalt parking lot as opposed to primarily what was a, a permeable paver parking lot. One of the reasons they had the permeable paver parking lot on the previous design, the stone base of the permeable pavers was intentioned to be used for detention storage purposes, to provide a little bit of onsite storage. The applicant is now providing that in that pond in the northwest corner of the site The bulk of the detention, though, will still be on the, the pond that's to the east of the condominium building. So, that's where they're meeting the, the bulk of the detention volume. As Kathy mentioned, one of the things that we did in reviewing the, the site plan, we also took a look at the overall subdivision design for Amberly Woods subdivision, as well as the downstream subdivision, Stonebridge. One of the things that we found for the Amberly Woods subdivision, there's, their onsite detention pond, which would be modified as part of this plan. The onsite detention pond for Amberly Woods subdivision, the calculations included a calculation of the offsite area that was tributary to the, to the site. Now, under the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance, one of the reasons you do that is you adjust the size of your pond and the size of your outlet structure based on how much water is coming in from outside of your site. The calculations for Amberly Woods subdivision that were completed, you know, with the initial subdivision back in, started in 2003 and finalized in 2006, calculated a larger area, offsite area that was tributary to the site than was actually getting there. I believe the calculations had about 60 acres coming into the site as opposed to about eight or nine that were actually coming to the site. So, the, the result of that calculation was that the restrictor for the, the pond, the existing pond that's east of the condominium building was too big, and they were able to increase that too much based on what the, the ordinance would allow. So, one of the conditions that we were going to put on the development of this property was to reduce that restrictor size based on the actual offsite tributary area that's, that's flowing into the site. Other questions?
And just to follow on, that pond then flows into another one?
Yes. Now, the, the pond for Amberly Woods subdivision does flow offsite to a, actually a series of ponds, three ponds that are, that make up the Stonebridge subdivision. So, here's, here's the site now. The pond that I've been talking about is over here near the condominium building. That pond discharges to the east, flows through a pipe to a pond in this area, and there's, there's a, a series of three interconnected ponds, here, here, and here. And those three ponds, like the Amberly ponds, you know, when they were first, the Amberly Pond, I should say, when they were each first developed, should have taken into account the amount of tributary area coming to it from offsite. What I just mentioned was, this pond here for Amberly underestimated, or I'm sorry, overestimated the amount of tributary area that was coming from down here to the south into the site, and so the restrictor was made too large. The opposite problem occurred to the east here. The ponds to the east did not take into account the ponds that were discharging into that pond, and as a result, the restrictor was made too small. That restrictor can be made larger. There's other things that, that can be done to that pond to account for that.
Do they all flow east over to the town line road, town line baseball park?
Yeah, generally the flow is from west to east. This, these three ponds discharge through a pipe underneath the roadway here and then discharge at grade a little bit further down, and actually get into the storms that are within the IDOT right-of-way. The, there's a portion of the Stonebridge site that discharges straight east to the park site.
You weren't here earlier, but same question that I raised before. By developing this site, we will actually improve drainage in the surrounding communities as a result of changes that we're making to drainage here. Is that a true statement?
Yeah, I think we have a couple of opportunities. One, to address, you know, the release structure on this pond, but also the process of providing the additional detention for this volume reduces the overall release rate for the site. There's a larger volume of water that's being, being generated because of the increased impervious area, but the rate at which that water is released due to the provision of detention is reduced.
It's real easy to change those restrictors, isn't it?
Fairly easy, yes. It's not, it's not a lot of money to change out a restrictor.
So, I'm fascinated by your concern with this, and it seems to me that we've had a discussion, oh, gosh, a discussion of a number of ponds that we're not actually seeing. So, I, I first want to say I'm incredibly excited by this new plan. I think it's, I think it gives us a really wonderful opportunity for something we were hoping to see last year, but, but I think we're going to get a lot closer. I'm hoping, because I, I don't, does the building review board, will they look at drainage?
Well, they specifically...
Who's, who's responsible to be sure we're getting the drainage right?
Well, when it goes back to the Plant Commission, this gentleman standing up there is easier city engineer, but then ultimately, the city council, when it comes back for final approval, you'll need to make sure that all the drainage calcs have been put in place and any other conditions, engineering conditions that they're requesting will be adhered to.
So, it seems like when we look at the drainage, it's really important that we get a picture, not just of that, of this, of this area that's under development, but, but the various ponds that are being sort of pointed out that I can't see. And as a, as a visual person, it's going to be really important to me to see, to see the whole plan, and I think probably to the residents to know that this is something that we're, we're taking very seriously. So, obviously, it's probably something you would have done anyway, but I'm imagining ponds in various places and looking at my map and, you know, it's pretty small print. So...
It is difficult.
So, a really good, a really good read on, on what's where and what's going where and so on would be terrific. Thank you.
Question for Kathy. You showed two site plans, one with a cul-de-sac, one with the Amberly Court through-street. What's staff's feeling on a cul-de-sac versus a through-street? What's the petitioner's feeling about that, and what are the neighbors' feelings about that?
I can tell you what the Plan Commission recommended. The Plan Commission did support the cul-de-sac. However, they acknowledged that keeping the road open through the use of the gate really made sense as all of, as the entire 40-acre Amberly Woods site is built out. There's still the second condominium building. There are 22 more courtyard homes, and I won't, I will speak for Pine Tree, but I'll give them the opportunity to correct me. I, I believe that their preference, they, they believe they've heard from some nearby residents that there's a preference for the gate to remain in place. We've also heard from some residents that they would prefer a cul-de-sac. From the perspective of really separating a significant commercial development from a residential development, a cul-de-sac and appropriate landscaping makes sense. The way the condition is suggested, and again, you're not taking any final action, but the way the condition is suggested is that, is that as part of the approval, we would work with the city attorney to assure that the city has the ability to, once the entire Amberly Woods development is completed, the city would have the ability to require the cul-de-sac. Pine Tree has come forward and, and brought this cul-de-sac option plan to demonstrate that a cul-de-sac is possible. It, it would result in the loss of some parking on the site, but having this option and having a plan demonstrating that it works at least gives the city and the developer the opportunity as build-out occurs, as business gets underway on the site, as the homes are completed on Amberly Woods, to really have that discussion, see how it operates in real time, and, and see what the best decision is. So, this really preserves the option of, of moving toward the, remaining with the gate or moving toward the cul-de-sac.
So, if it's a through-street, it would be gated so that everybody coming from the fourth ward wanting to go to Whole Foods wouldn't be taking a shortcut through there?
Correct.
Because that would be my concern. I don't like that the cul-de-sac takes away parking because the parking's important, but I would be concerned about a lot of through traffic.
It, it would be gated right at this point. The gate would be operated by something like a FOB. The distribution of those devices would not be the city's responsibility. The operation of the gate, if it fails to operate, would not be the city's responsibility. So, this is a workable option from a planning perspective. The separation, again, of commercial and residential isn't quite achieved here, but the option for either is preserved, and again, as we brought this forward, we would work with the city attorney to assure that the city has some discretion in that area.
Yeah. Parking. And I've mentioned this to you before. My preference would be to see the striping like they do at Costco, to leave real ample room there, or to make a diagonal instead of perpendicular like this. I just, I think of the Fiori Square development by Starbucks there, and then also by Egg Harbor, where it's, it's a lot more difficult for people... Harbor, where it's, it's a lot more difficult for people to swing their cars in when there's not a big aisle, 90 degrees. So, diagonal parking would be great. You might lose some spaces, so just for me personally, if you had to move that 100-foot setback a little further north because you lost some parking spaces due to either doing it the Costco striping way or diagonally, I could support that.
We could certainly explore different options as they move into final engineering. Certainly, our, our engineering staff will look to assure that there's appropriate turning radius available, but we can certainly at least explore that.
I have just a few comments. This is pretty close to perfect in terms of what I was hoping for. Certainly, the setbacks are where they, where I've always felt they need to be, and I think, I think that has pretty much universal agreement with, with the other, with the aldermen here based on the meetings that we had before. I think the cul-de-sac is where I would certainly like to end up, but I think it's inappropriate certainly to put that cul-de-sac in now because of the ongoing construction of the coach homes that are going to occur, et cetera, but I do hope that we end up, I do hope that we end up getting there. I would like to say one last thing, and I'll say this to the petitioner, that it would be very nice if we saw the anchor tenant at one of these meetings so that we can be assured that the anchor tenant, whose name is all over this development, is really committed to this proposal.
We do have a representative from, who's here, setting in the pack.
I've got a couple of questions on setbacks, which I think was the big issue the last time, and, and they're, they make sense except for, except for 11C. If you could just address, the buildings are 10 feet from the property line, the setbacks are five feet from the property line, and why there's that five-foot difference, I'm not quite sure. But if you could, if, when we look at the landscape plan, there's a legitimate buffer behind that building to the, to the east, kind of in the northeast corner there. Is that five feet of bushes or 10 feet of bushes, and is that, can you really fit buffer in there, and isn't five feet from the right-of-way less than we had hoped for?
Are you talking about the west side of the property?
Yes, I am, yeah.
The Saunders Road?
The Saunders roadside, right. Because we were, there was a legitimate problem with that among the council the last time that they wanted it five feet, and it's, it's a, it stayed at five feet even though the buildings are at 10, so.
The, the earlier plan actually, there were a couple of earlier plans. In, in one of the earlier plans, the, the building actually encroached over the property line into the parkway. In this case, the building is set back. An earlier plan actually, that Pine Tree brought in, set the building back an additional five, five or so feet, five or 10 feet, but what that did was move the parking lot and the service road on the east side closer to the condominium building. And keep in mind, this, this is where the, the large trucks will come in, and preserving this setback distance, or increasing this setback distance seemed to be of more value than increasing the setback distance on Saunders Road. The, the full parkway remains, and in our discussions, we've talked perhaps that the city may, through a license agreement or some other mechanism, allow the developer to do plantings in the parkway. So, there certainly is enough space. It's, this isn't approaching within five feet of the road, it's simply five feet of the property line.
Okay. And between the property line and the road, for screening and other purposes, what's that dimension?
I believe it's about 25 feet between the property line and the road.
So, the buildings are 35 feet from the road instead of almost in the road?
Those approximate distances, yes.
Okay, all right. Because I was just looking at the five feet and the 89 feet on the east, and I understand there's a bigger bark coming from a neighbor than there is a street. And I have seen developments do wonderful jobs with architecture facing the street. Is there, will there be consideration, not at this meeting, obviously, to, to plan for something better-looking in the back of a brick building for that Saunders? Is that part of the, is that part of the discussion?
Depending on the council's direction tonight, yes. The developer will move forward with design development.
With a good-looking backside, so to speak.
And I, I think that particular building will probably have essentially four fronts because it will be visible.
Oops, sorry.
It's your last meeting.
Yeah, I didn't mean that.
You got to pass.
He doesn't even have a damn tie on.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just want to make sure it wasn't...
You're not be allowed to speak.
Okay, but there's, there's been some thought given to this, and it's not too close, is what, okay?
There's been considerable thought, and we certainly will keep your comments in mind.
It looked conflicting in here, but if it isn't, that's perfect, so.
Any other comments? Alderman Tack chiming in?
Yeah, my only comment is, I think conceptually, this seems to meet many of the requirements that most of us thought needed to be met when this came around the last time. I'm a little surprised that we're having such detailed discussions about things. I thought we were sort of approving a general concept to move forward, especially considering that there's a historic house that sits on the, on the site that hasn't been removed yet, so to my understanding, we can't even do anything with the site until that's taken care of. But for me, just looking at this, without getting into details, I'm fairly happy with the way this has addressed the concerns.
Any other questions?
Slam dunk.
I'd ask for anyone from the public who would like to comment on this to come forward, please. Again, I know you've done it before, but would you state your name and address?
Dan Seeball, 560 Ivy Court. My primary grocery store is Whole Foods and, in Deerfield, and I rarely use a car to get there and when I shop. There's Whole Foods in Evanston, Whole Foods bought Wild Oats, so there's a Whole Foods that's three blocks away. There's humongous Whole Foods in Lincoln Park in Chicago, there's one near Maxwell Street in Chicago. These stores all do amazing business. Unfortunately, I want to point out that it was maybe 10 years ago that Costco was voted on, a previous alders in Lake Forest, and was voted down. And it was divisive, but in the end, it was a vote against retail on the outskirts of town. This is just essentially sprawl, and I think it's basically throwing a lifeboat to Amberly Woods. I don't know what the situation is with Amberly Woods. Those lots have been slated for, since probably 2008. I don't know why they're not selling or what the deal is there. I'd like to point out that this could just lead to blight. If it, sales are not good, the Whole Foods could pull out, and having a lot of traffic is not a guarantee for success, and I'll point out Oak Creek Plaza in Mundeline has a lot of traffic go through it, but that shopping center is just blight. And now Mundeline is courting a super Walmart for that site. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Seeball. Anyone else?
Mayor, city council members. For the record, Andrew Goodman, resident at 808 East Stoldell Road in Lake Forest, and I am here 100% in support of this development. It brings tremendous, a tremendous opportunity to a vacant property that's been sitting there fail for years. I happen to be a professional developer in the shopping center industry, so I know that some of these Whole Foods boxes, very good ones, could produce over $50 million of sales a year, which is much needed in an era of declining municipal revenues and increasing municipal expenses. You have the opportunity here to bring best-in-class grocery to the community. I'm pleased to see that it, there's an opportunity yet again to bring it into Lake Forest as opposed to going to another community like Vernon Hills. As far as use for this site, it's absolutely appropriate to be developed for retail use given the traffic that is generated by this site on a daily basis. I would imagine at least 40,000 or 50,000 cars a day. And I am also pleased to see that Pine Tree was brought to the table. Again, being a, a professional developer, I know Pine Tree's reputation, which is tremendous. Peter Borzak is a first-class guy, and he's, he's, he has a first-class organization, and you have the right team combined with the Shiner Group to bring a tremendous project to the community, which I'd be very proud as a resident to shop, to see, to bolster the municipal coffers. I don't see any downside anywhere in this proposal, stormwater, traffic, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. If not, I would ask the council to, or ask for a motion to approve a resolution endorsing the proposed commercial development and revised site plan, and directing the petitioner to present the design aspects of the development to the Building Review Board for review and recommendation, and present a request for approval of the demolition of the existing residence to the Historic Preservation Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Take a roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Epstein.
Alderman Tack.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, one abstention, motion carries.
Thank you biddy very much. I would like to echo some of the comments that were made as well. We're delighted that you're back in front of us. We're delighted that the site plan has taken the shape that it has. Very often, a little bit of time and a little bit of energy and some good thoughts with some smart people are able to make things happen, and we, I believe you heard tonight, the council is very supportive of the project. We would encourage you to continue to move forward and look forward to seeing you put a shovel in the ground very soon. So, thank you. Next item on the agenda, gosh, presentation of fabulous parting gifts and prizes for Alderman Moore. You wouldn't want to miss this. I don't know why anyone's...
Don't leave, don't leave.
I don't understand. City Manager Bob Kylie, care to start?
Well, I'm not sure I can top the Whole Foods, but we do have a few parting gifts, and let me make a few introductory comments first, is that obviously, we're very sad that Alderman Moore will be leaving us, but I have to say, we're very happy that you're staying in the community. You're leaving a great ward, which I live in, but you're moving to an equally good ward in the first ward as well. I think everybody on the council knows that it really has been a privilege working with David, and even though he's leaving the council, he's still very committed to the community, whether it's in Lake Forest Open Lands, Gorton, or another, number of other agencies and organizations within the community. And I think that goes to David's DNA in that, you know, his mom worked in local government and passed that tradition down on to David, and it really shows in terms of the amount of effort and commitment that he makes to making Lake Forest a better place. We at the staff level have really appreciated David and his comments over the years as well. I know sometimes you don't think that that's the case, but really, we do. And part of the reason is because you challenge us to be better. And as a result of that, I think we have been able to achieve many things that we otherwise wouldn't have, and I think to the residents, they need to know that David has added an awful lot to the council and to this organization by continuing to press us to do better and to try to achieve at a higher level. And I think most recent, a good example of that was the discussion on the epoxy floors at the Public Works Facility. It would have been very simple to contract out, and we followed all the bidding procedures and contracted out, but because of your experience and some of the background and, and work that you had done in your own profession, that you said, you know what, there is a better way to do this, and we can save more money if we do this and this and this, which ultimately is what happened. And it was through your foresight and your recommendations that we saved additional money for the residents of Lake Forest. So, we're going to miss you, but we know you're not going to go far. We know where to find you, and if you act up, we can always stop your garbage collection and make sure that you come back whenever the mayor or future city council or caucus calls upon you. We do have a couple of parting gifts for you in keeping with tradition. One, you know what this is. And then we also have a tree that will be planted in your honor, and really, the only question the staff asks, is he going to plant it in the second ward or is he going to plant it in the first ward?
It's not an ash tree, is it?
An elm.
Congratulations.
Now, I'll, I'll jump in if I can, and then we'll allow the council to have a crack, or I mean, have an opportunity to make some comments. And I'd echo a lot of what Bob said, and sitting in this chair, I would say, David, that I will miss your good questions. I will miss you looking at things perhaps a little differently than many of us, and that's a real positive. That's not a negative. Your, your wisdom, your business sense and savvy, but your, more than anything, your passion for the community and your passion for the things that are important have stood out for as long as I've had the pleasure to work with you, and it's truly been an honor. And I will miss your, not only your presence, I will miss your great sense of humor. Well, yeah, I guess I will. But truly and honestly, I, I will miss you being a part of this group. You have added a tremendous amount, and I will tell you honestly that as a resident of this community, I am deeply grateful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add also, it's been a pleasure serving with you. You are a great volunteer. You served the HPC for all those years. It's been great to work with you here, and before I forget, I apologize for the day up in Minnesota when my dog tried to eat yours when we were grouse hunting. But Don really touched on a lot of key points that came to my mind as well. You do bring a unique perspective. Your background in business has, has given you a skill and an eye for things that not all of us share, and so I think it's been terrific that the diversity, the diversity we have up here, in large part because of you and your background, has added to the deliberation process and the quality of the work that the council's been able to produce up here. So, I thank you for that. I wish you nothing but the best, and we'll be talking.
Thanks. I'd like to say, David, you've had many accomplishments since I've been serving with you on the, at the, at these sessions, and I have to say, probably your biggest accomplishment was last meeting when you were able to turn a two-minute conversation on the purchasing of light bulbs into a 50-minute extravaganza that caused most of us to miss most of the second half of the Bulls game, the Bulls championship game. I would like to say, other than that damn good smile of yours or your sense of humor, I'm not going to miss you at all.
All right, I'll, I'll jump in. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, there's a couple of things, there's a lot of things I admire about David, but I think the two things, if I had to narrow it down to the two things that I admire the most is your enthusiasm. You're just an enthusiastic guy. You're enthusiastic about a lot of things, about your family, about your work, about your interests, and one of the things that you're very enthusiastic about is our community, and we've all benefited from that. And, and the second thing is, is not just your unique way of looking at things, which I think we've all touched upon, but your courage to speak your mind and to say things and to never be afraid to maybe be the one person who sees it a little bit differently and to bring it to alter, alter our attention, and I really admire that. And it's, it's been a pleasure getting to know you and a pleasure working with you, and I want to, on behalf of Prue and myself, welcome you to the first, first ward, and I just want to say, David, from the bottom of my heart, that if at any time, day or night, you have any questions, problems, or concerns, please, please, don't hesitate to call Prue.
So, so David, the, the thing that I most appreciate about you, and I learned, I think from the first time meeting I was at, was the fact that you weren't necessarily, you didn't feel obligated to eat what you were fed, and by that, I mean, you would...
And by that, I mean, you would listen to things and not necessarily take them at face value, but challenge them. And for me, that was very refreshing to see, that it was already here, because I tend to sort of lean that way myself. It's bad manners, but it's good government, and I really appreciate it.
I'd like to sort of second all those comments, and then just thank you for being my second ward teammate. You got there first, so you...
You took all the calls.
Yeah, and I took all the calls and did the ward meetings, and, but I do think that... I do think the comments about Dave's willingness to speak up and keep a stiff backbone really have added a lot to the commit, to the, to all of our proceedings here. And I guess I've had the mantle passed now that I'm the one that's supposed to be after the no-bid contracts from here on out. But just remember, I think Dave may have a very unique distinction in that his, his backbone and his sense of justice and correct behavior and comportment are so strong that he actually, I think, is the first Alderman to ever get himself sued. And so, and he was absolutely right in what he said, and I think we all agreed with it. And I don't know that any of us really anticipated that it would come to that, and the fact that it all happened absolutely proved his point. And so, if you want to talk about people that are willing to defend their positions, that's, that's a strong endorsement. And I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna miss you, and I'm gonna miss your, as others have said before me here, coming from, coming at things from a different perspective than, than I do, certainly on many, on many occasions, and oftentimes adding a lot of value in the process. Small example, which I'll finish with, was the shipping costs on the, on the modules for the water plant, which I think that was forty or fifty thousand dollars of savings just in shipping costs, because Dave said, wait a minute, we don't have to pay that much. So, that happened, that happened a lot. And, and I just, we're gonna miss that. So, thank you.
So, it seems that there are a couple of really dramatic themes here that everybody is saying, and it seems particularly uncreative of me to say the same things. I'm trying to think of a slightly different way, but there really isn't. Michelle and I have had the pleasure of working with you for a year. It was clear from the start that if you were here, we were gonna help, we were gonna have a good laugh. And that, that goes a long way in life. It's just, it's a, it's a wonderful part of, of any human interaction, and thank you for, for pretty much guaranteeing that. The other thing is, and everyone has said it, and we've said "unique," I mean, I think there are, sometimes I would say even quirky, but you have made us look at things in a different way. And I'm trying to figure out what we're gonna do about that now. I think probably saying, what would David do, or what would David say is probably just, maybe that's, you know, a little, a little odd. On the other hand, I think, and it's fine, George, if you're gonna take over the, you know, being cautious about the one bid thing, I think that's good.
I'll take whatever help I can get.
But I think all of us have gotten used to sometimes you being our conscience. And, and not that we don't all bring good consciences to this, to this room and to this, to these jobs, I think we do need to be very mindful that we're not gonna have you here nudging us, nudging us intellectually and nudging us in sort of justice ways and cost-saving ways. And we're, we're gonna need to be mindful of that. I think it's a big burden for Tim. We can't count on him to do that alone, coming in as the, as the new guy now, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to take it seriously. Also, I would ask you to watch every show diligently on television, and if you think we're getting it wrong, feel free to call Kathy.
But not, not to be left out and to follow the theme, for me, it's your ability to, to not only look at government process and peel it back, but process management. So, whether that's engineering, as it relates to city functions or purchasing, but it's, it's peeling back the process and looking at the components and making sure that each one of those components is given due attention. I really appreciate you. I will miss you very much. It's been a great year with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's all change our email addresses so he can't...
Alderman Moore, the floor is yours.
Well, first of all, it's been a lot of fun, and it's, you know, there was a, there was a tendency when I got here to city council to see how short a meeting could be, and much to Jack Chagrin, who's company...
You fix that.
I don't watch ball sports, so I can't really relate to how long the meetings go on, so... But it's been, it's really, it's exciting to be part of this council. It's so thoughtful, it's so prepared, so many people have carried so many different perspectives. You know, and it's just ironic, and I know my wife's not watching, because she would never watch a city council meeting, but the, the fact is, you know, if my humor's been commented on a couple of times, she's warned me over and over again to not try to be funny, because I'll just irritate people because of my timing issues. But it's a...
That's new material.
So, I'm glad, I'm glad she's a little bit wrong, which is, which is, which is good. If any, that was more than being polite. I gotta tell you, it's a, it's a, it's a great council, but it's a tremendous city staff. And I've gotten to know a lot of people here. You know, whether it's the consistency of, and I'm just gonna pick a few, because I can see a few people out here, but whether it's the consistency of Bob Kylie, the thoroughness of Elizabeth, you know, the remarkable, you know, care and interest in residents that Michael Thomas has. And probably most of all, to my style, has been what I've learned from Kathy Cerniak in community development, and that is this, this remarkable respect for the process, the public vetting in the boards and commissions, the, the preparedness of the, of the council members and the people that, that, that bring things to the, to the council. The fact that this room isn't often crowded, in my opinion, doesn't reflect any level of apathy, but a, but a complete commitment and thorough examination and fulfillment of the process of public, of, you know, of a public process. And it's so wonderful to be part of something that so many people, I mean, how many times have we been here, and everybody's here? It's most of the time. And it's a, it's really, really wonderful. The whole thing, it just feels like the whole thing's running on eight cylinders to me, and I just wanna, I'm just proud to be a part of it, and, and thanks for all the kind words.
Thank you. I'll make one of the comment, you know, other people have heard me say this, I think, at the end of the day, and I look out and I see former Alderman Rumel and others, or former Mayor Rumel or other, when it's all said and done, you hope that when you walk down for the last time, that people say you made a difference, and you did. So, thank you.
Sure.
Next item on the agenda, additional items for council discussion? None. We will take about a five-minute recess, and we'll begin, actually, session number two, which will involve seating the new council, and we'll have a couple of other items of business to take care of at that time. So, at this point, I'd like to ask for Mr. Alderman Moore to give me a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we're adjourned. We'll return in about five minutes. Thank you.
Problem could be that...
Having been elected to the office of mayor...
Having been elected to the office of mayor...
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Now, I ask Alderman Waldock, Pendeleon, Reisenberg, and Adelman, please step forward.
If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, and we'll just go on. Aye, state your name.
Alderman Waldock.
Pendeleon.
Katherine Waldock.
Mike.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman...
Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
And in the county of Lake.
And in the county of Lake.
And in the state of Illinois.
And in the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Alderman.
And Mr. Newman, could you please step forward?
No. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Tim Newman.
Have been appointed to the office of Alderman...
Have been appointed to the office of Alderman.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome, Freddie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. I'd like to take this opportunity to, first of all, thank, and the four Aldermen that have chosen again to continue to serve. Your service is not just honorable, but it is critical to the process and what makes our community so special. And you each have added a tremendous amount to the council and to this community, and I'm, I'm grateful, and I know the residents are as well. So, thank you for continuing to raise your hand, or perhaps have your hand raised a bit for you. And to, now Alderman Newman, thank you also for answering the call. You've got a tremendous amount of experience in volunteer organizations and in city boards and commissions. You're well-suited, Tim, to, to the role, and we look forward to having you be a part of the council for a long time, so thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for everyone's support. I know most of you. I look forward to getting to know the rest of you. I have tremendous respect for this institution and a tremendous level of respect for city staff, Bob Kylie, city manager, Kathy Zerniak, Elizabeth Hollob, all just a terrific team of players. And at least for the next year, my last name will equal my seniority status.
And I know I speak for all of us who sit up here, that it is certainly an honor to serve this community, and we are grateful for the opportunity and really humbled by the opportunity that we've been given. So, on behalf of all nine of us sitting here, I want to thank both the caucus as well as the residents of Lake Forest for giving us this opportunity. So, thank you. Next item on the agenda, the election and appointment of city officers. I will read them, and we will ask all of us for a voice vote approval when we're done. The election of the city council is required by the charter and the city code, and to be appointed, the city treasurer, Elizabeth A. Hollob, city supervisor, Robert R. Kylie Jr., city marshal and collector, James Held, city attorney, Victor Philippini, city clerk, Robert R. Kylie Jr., city surveyor and engineer, Gee Walt Hamilton Associates. I would like to have a motion to approve those appointees, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, unanimously approved. Thank you, and congratulations, and look forward to working with you. Next item on the agenda, reports of city officers, comments by mayor. And without further ado, I'd like to continue our good wishes for Alderman, former Alderman Moore, and read a resolution of appreciation for David Elmore, second ward Alderman, May 2010 to May 2015.
Is that open for deliberation?
Not until we ask for a motion.
Please.
It will be a close vote, though. Whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the city council and finance committee, was chairman of the public works committee, and served on the personnel, compensation, and administration committee, cultural corridor task force, housing trust fund board, and was liaison to Croya and liaison to business and commerce. And whereas, he was a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for over two years, reviewing residents' proposals for new construction and demolitions of existing structures. And whereas, he has served on the boards of many community nonprofit agencies, including Lake Forest Open Lands Association, and in a multitude of advisory leadership positions for many other charitable organizations. And whereas, he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees and the duties of the city council. And on behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibility with purpose and dedication. And whereas, the citizens of Lake Forest recognize, recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Forest, Illinois, hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to David Elmore for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, which shall be spread upon the permanent records of the city council. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion to approve. Alderman Moore? and commission members and reappointments. I have quite a few to read, so if you'll bear with me, and we'll go through them. And then again, we'll ask for a voice, voice vote approval of the council at the end. Appointments to the building review board, James Diamond, Robert, Robert Rita, Ted Notes will be reappointed and also appointed as chairman, Ross Friedman, and Mike Black. The cemetery commission, David Hook is appointed, Patrick Louby is appointed, reappointed, and Dennis O'Brien will be reappointed and appointed as chairman. The Yalwa commission, Georgia West, Samuel Henry, and Patricia Moore, all reappointed. Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Gale, Susan Atherson, and Robert Alfie, who are both reappointed, as well as Jim Preschlack, who will be appointed as chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. The legal committee, Dale Talk, Ken Weinberger, and Dave Newmeister, and Dave will be appointed as chairman. The library board, Wendy Darling, David Rose, and Carrie Travers are all appointed, and the student appointee is Kenneth Sanders. Park and Recreation Board, Shannon McGuire and Scott Herman are appointed, Charles Colmeyer is being appointed as chairman, and Colton England will be appointed, and he is a student representative to the park and rec board. The senior resource commission, Thomas Sullivan is being appointed, and Steve Potsek will be reappointed, and he also will be appointed as chairman. The Gorton board, Sally Downey reappointed, John Loube reappointed, and Stephen Goldman, who is now a new appointee. And the Housing Trust Fund board, Michael Flynn will accept a new appointment. Any questions, otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve all these appointments.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, they are approved. Also, would like to approve a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of the boards and commissions, and they are as follows. The building review board, chairman Charles King. Cemetery commission, chairman Colin Sylvester. Firefighters pension fund, William Anderson. Historic Preservation Commission, chairman Keith Paritz. The legal committee, chairman Raymond Bushman. The library board, Janet Gibson and Lisa Detling. Park and Recreation Board, Kirk Volkman. Police Pension Fund, Charles Fleisch. And the senior resources commission, the chairman, Nene Lustig, and Lester Hammer. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution, resolution of appreciation for that group?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, those are all approved. And that concludes my report for this evening. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager Bob Kylie.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. The only report I have, or the only motion I have, is to welcome our newest Alderman of the second ward. I got a long list of complaints that my previous second ward Alderman wouldn't listen to, and so now that you're on board, I'll be able to sit down and go through that whole list, so...
Yeah, that's why I got them on.
Yeah, that's right. Welcome.
Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda, comments by council members. Any from, anything from the council this evening? Okay, if not, hearing none. Item number four... Item number four on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to address the council on a non-agenda item? I'm sorry, we don't recognize you, sir.
Bailiff.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, items for omnibus vote consideration. And again, as we always do, if any of the council would like to take these separately, we'll do so. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve at the end. Number one, approval of a scheduled regular meetings of the city council to include fiscal year 2016. And number two, approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with a northeast multi-regional training body, the Mobile Training Unit authorized by the Intergovernmental Law Enforcement Officers in Service Training Act. Care to take any of those individually? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldak?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Betty, very much. Next item is ordinances. We have no ordinances on the agenda this evening. Item number seven is new business, consideration of a resolution endorsing Concept A of the 2015 Fort Sheridan Master Plan, prepared by the Lake County Forest Preserve District, presented by Robert Kiley.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Back in the early '90s, the Lake County Forest Preserve District acquired approximately 253 acres at the northerly end of Fort Sheridan, which at the time was the golf course property and the parade ground property. And for approximately the first 15, 20 years, there was a lot of discussion and conversation as to what would happen with this. There was plans for a championship golf course. But at the end of the day, in 2012, the Forest Preserve District formally approved not proceeding with the golf course development, and began looking at what could be done with that northerly property. After about two and a half years of public meetings and discussions, and quite frankly, taking comments and input from a number of different residents and experts and other sources, and sometimes those interests being, competing with one another, that they have narrowed down to master concept plans that they will be presenting this evening for the city council consideration. They are looking for input, and therefore it's important at some point that the city council weigh in on whether we prefer options A or options B. The real difference between the two options, as they will explain here, really have to do with the location of parking and what the implications are of the parking on the types of uses that will occur now and into the future at this site. So, this evening, we have the executive director in attendance. Also, we have two county board, Forest Preserve District Board members, President Ann Main and our county park district representative, Mike Rumel, as well as Ty Kovak. So, I'm not sure who's going first. I guess Mike is.
I'm gonna go first for about 30 seconds. I did want to say one further thing to what Bob said. When we were at the golf course, we annexed that property. And the question was at the time, we had the far north end, but who was gonna take care of the middle? There was a golf course out there. Who was gonna be first responder? Who was gonna take care of this property? So, when I was mayor, we did annex that property. So, all the property that is north of the drive as you come in is in the city of Lake Forest. So, that's why we are here, because this is your property. Second of all, we've been, I just wanted to talk about today, we've been in budget hearings all day, and I can report that the, we passed our budget. It is balanced, and we reduce it just slightly, but we're at $78 million, which is down from $102 million we were two years ago. So, we've continued to do good things. Among the things we presented before was the Adelman Highway, which is going in later this fall. And this is another piece of the project, is how we're going to redo Fort Sheridan. This is not a small amount of money the Forest Preserve is spending on this redo. It's $2.4 million of infrastructure and redoing that we're putting here. And so, we're looking for as much public input as we can and as much support as we can for this program, because this is money that's in our CIP budget. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ann Main, who is our president, who, I've been talking enough all day with the finance, so I'll let her take over this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, board. Welcome, Alderman Newman. And just as a reminder, I too represent the city of Lake Forest and that Everett Road corridor and over there. So, I'm happy to be here. So, let me see if I can get this. There we go. Okay. Okay, wow. All right, I know, well, hopefully some of you have been out there. So, anyway, as Commissioner Rumel said a few months ago, we were here and gave you an update on the county and the forest preserve. And at that time, I spent some time and talked about the special assets that Lake, the city of Lake Forest has. That's Middle Fork Savannah and Fort Sheridan. And as Bob Kiley so ably summarized, that northern portion of Fort Sheridan, which most people don't realize, is in the corporate limits of the city of Lake Forest. So, briefly, the Forest Preserve has already spent $8 million in ecological restoration at Fort Sheridan. Let's see if I can do this here. So, the ravines here, over here, and there's other work that we've done. Okay, oh, it's kinda hard to do this, but. And we've also budgeted an additional $2.3 million that's going to be in conjunction with the Army Corps of Engineer Great Lakes Project. And that's going to be enhancing the water habitat along here, tying in with the ravines over here. And we'll be protecting this very rare bluff habitat there. So, and we are also working with the city and with other partners to start to restore the traditional oak woodland savanna habitat that was up there. So, our plans do include putting some trees in either of the sites, putting, filling in some trees here. You are still gonna have this fabulous view here. So, just, that's not gonna be obscured, but we are gonna be putting some trees in here because our oak woodlands are one of our most endangered habitats. So, our challenge here, here's the, you come in here, I'm sorry if you've all been there, but briefly, there's the parking over here. There's also parking over here by the cemetery. And in addition, parking that, not that we own, but nearby is also, there's some over here nearby where the city owns, and then the different metro lots. So, there's that open area, there's the ravines and a variety of habitats. So, there we go. So, what we're trying to do, we've been studying this, and we face the same challenge that probably you have with your park programs or the national parks. How do we provide access while still protecting those things that are rare and endangered and special? And that's the challenge that we've been grappling with. So, one of the things is that along this bluff, there are endangered plants that grow no place else in Lake County. This is it, no place else. And what we've really seen is, oh, I can do it from here, is with all the parking concentrated here, just like in any other situation, when you sort of funnel everybody into one location, you get a real high concentration of people just kind of pushing out right there. And sort of the natural tendency is to then everybody start walking right along here. And we have photographic evidence, which you can't see, where a number of trails of cut-down-the-bluff people have gone through and crushed plants. And cutting down the bluff there, it's gonna create erosion, and it's really, really counteractive to the things that we're trying to do with the Army Corps of protect that special area. So, we have two plans. This is, this is A here. And what A does is it pulls the parking back from here and puts the parking here. And there are some changes in trails and things like that. But essentially, it's providing parking and access in a different location so that people can go in a variety of directions. They can see the, they can see the ravine, they can go out more easily to the parade ground, and they can go in other directions. So, kind of trying to push that back. In addition, it really also enhances not only the protection of the plants here, but that incredible view of the bluffs, that vista of the bluffs. So, that's what essentially Plan A does. And Plan B keeps parking here where it currently is, pulls it back a little bit, reduces it in number, also puts a little parking over here. So, that's kind of simply the two plans. They both have habitat restoration. And as Mr. Kiley said, we've been going out, we've been hearing from a lot of people. We're very grateful for the support of Lake Forest Open Lands and their support of Plan A. And so, we're just here today to answer any questions that you might have and hope that you would support Commissioner Rumel and I and Plan A. So, I'd be happy to take any questions and answer them, or the three of us answer them the best we can.
I have some questions, Ann.
Certainly.
What communities are going to be voting on this? And have any of the communities already voted? And if so, how did they vote?
So, any community is free to vote on this, if you will. We have heard that, we have a letter from Highland Park and Highwood, and they are opposed, actually, to both Plan A and B. They don't want any changes.
They voted for Plan B? Is that what you said?
No, they didn't even like Plan B.
They voted for neither?
Yes.
But they also sent the letter three months ago before we sent the plan out.
But they don't want any changes. That's what their letter said to us.
And what does that mean? No changes?
Yes, so, the Plan B does reduce some of the parking here. It also moves it back a little bit. Have you been, have you been down there?
No, I was not able to make it that one night. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I understand, and I know you have so much. The only reason I ask, there is a private drive, there's a residence down here. There's private, and there'll be, I think, up to three private residents. That road there is permanent, and they must be able to get through. But what we're trying to do with B, if you have parking there, is pull it back from some of that shared driveway, because it's really also created a problem of people walking down the private driveway. There's kind of some odd uses there that we're locked into. And so, B, pull some of it back and does reduce some of the parking there.
A couple of other questions?
Certainly.
I mean, we have, we obviously have our own private pristine beach. What does High, I don't know the, I, you know, I don't know what Highwood has, and I don't know what Highland Park has. What do they have?
So, if I may, this is not a beach like your beach, because you allow swimming and have lifeguards there. This is, this is not a beach. This is not a beach for swimming. There are no lifeguards there. It is posted as no swimming. This, there was, you know, people can argue about it, but there was ordinance there. And so, there is no swimming there. So, I just want to make that clear. The city of Highland Park has a couple beaches for people to swim. The city of Highland Park, I do not believe, has any beaches. I would, however, also like to point out.
Did you say, Highwood?
I would, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah. I would, I'd like to point out, this hatched mark down here is 77 acres. That's owned by open lands, and this is also public land. So, from here down to as far as open land zones, I believe that's almost two miles. Is that correct? Almost two miles of public, I'm gonna call it lakeshore as opposed to beach. It is a beach, but none of those places, nowhere along there are you allowed to legally swim. Yeah.
You and Mike are in favor of Plan A.
We are.
Okay, I'm struggling a little bit with Plan A.
I understand.
Because I think it's a triumph of preservation, which I truly love, over people.
Yeah.
And sometimes when those two P things get together, I usually flip it and favor the people. Give me the rationale for why Plan A.
Well, I would say that there are actually, that's an incredible sight, and there is so much to see there. And the walk along this ravine is really a thing of beauty. It's an incredible experience for people to have. And I would say that having this parking here, what it's really done is just had everyone go, "Oh, I'm gonna run down to the beach for five minutes and maybe run back up." And as an educator, as someone who's just always been involved and loved nature since I was, you know, two years old or whatever, I just think the opportunity to get people maybe a little bit out of their comfort zone to walk and experience some different areas is something important. We're not saying that people can't go down there. We're just saying, hey, can you look at some of these other areas? And yes, for some people, this is a longer walk. I would also like to point out that the current access is not ADA accessible. It is a seven or eight percent grade, and there is no way to make it handicap accessible. We are not allowed, we have looked into this, we are not allowed to dig into the bluff or anything like that. I do understand that there is a gap between someone saying, "I need something handicap accessible," and someone who's saying, "Well, that's a little bit of a longer walk for me." So, I understand that. I guess I would say someone can still go to that location with Plan A, have a beautiful view, have a beautiful experience, and I think come away with something great.
What's the length of the walk?
It's.
About five tenths of a mile.
Five tenths of a mile.
Five tenths of a mile.
And I'm gonna take another swing at this, Jack. Because we do.
Mike, can you use the microphone so people at home can hear everything?
Let me go back.
Let me take another swing at this. We do own the parade grounds. And most people think the parade grounds are part of Fort Sheridan. They're not. They're part of the Forest Preserve. So, part of this recreation is, we're putting a loop on the parade grounds. It's about a mile and a half loop for people to walk. And we're also putting trees back into the parade ground. We're taking over, at the easterly side of the parade ground, there's an oak savanna. We are taking that over and replanting that oak savanna. Ann's pointing it out. So, in order to get optimal use of this property, if you put the parking all the way at the lake, you're not telling people that you own this piece. And our, we want to have a mile and a half loop that goes around there. We want to have a three-mile loop that goes through the thing, and we want parking setral located to all three of the, if you will, sites that are there. One through the main preserve, one through the loop that's there, and third, the access to the beach. And also, by pulling this back, it gives you a much better vista of the beach. Instead of a vista of a bunch of cars and parking, you have a vista of the lakefront. So, as Ann said, the handicap access is really a minor issue, because no one can get down to the beach anyway for handicap. So, if you're going four tenths of a mile to be in the same place as you are, because the total walk is five tenths, but if you go four tenths of a mile to be in the same place, if you're out there for nature, it's a spectacular place to go to. So, I'm, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to interrupt, Jack.
No, that's right.
But I just want to jump in with a comment, and then I do have a question as well. And, Jack, I would urge you to go down there. I'm embarrassed to say that I hadn't visited it often or much lately, and I've been down there on several occasions recently. And I really think it's a place of sort of quiet, passive enjoyment. And you see a lot of people birdwatching, a lot of people walking, a lot of people biking. It's really just, it's a very tranquil, beautiful place. And I think that, to me, the Concept A versus Concept B, it's almost posed onto a philosophical question. And I'm probably, on the, on the preservation versus people question, I'm probably coming down on the preservation side. But I do think it's sort of a philosophical question in terms of what should this be? Should this be really more of a public beach? Is that the aspect of it that we really want to encourage? Or do we really want to sort of keep it as it is and enhance it and make it better? So, I think it's, again, the beach area is beautiful. It doesn't look like a beach that you could swim in. It does look rather treacherous, but there certainly were people, on the days that I've been down there, sitting there on a blanket, reading a book. It's very peaceful. The question that I have is, I noticed that one of the reasons that Concept A is endorsed by you, Mike, and Ann, and is from a public safety standpoint. And I'm just curious as, whether you can speak to why you feel that Concept A is preferable from a public safety standpoint than Concept B? And any of you can jump up and.
Yes, so, right now, just from a standpoint of having a number of people down at the beach and the ability to respond to emergency situations down there, it's very difficult for us to get there. We have a number of citations that we have to deal with every year from people using the beach as a swimming area. It's not allowed. In order for us to use that as a beach, we'd have to do a sweep, probably on a biannual basis. If you look at the area just above the bluff, it's very difficult to see it, but there's actually some deed restrictions to the top. actually some deed restrictions to the top, and you can see just the little lines there. That's areas where there's, the, the Army has told us that there's still ordinance in place, that ordinance goes down to the beach, there's still obstacles in there, and it's very difficult for us to deal with that. And so, in, in terms of, right now, we have about 80 parking spots there. Eighty parking spots means that on a very, very busy summer day, we have 80 people down there. And trying to police that to keep them out of the water is very difficult for us. Using Gilgare Road to go down, right now, we have no way to block the traffic after hours. And so, we've had to deal with parties in the evenings and on weekends, and that means just from an enforcement standpoint that we have a lot of people down there that we have to try to keep track of and, and, and deal with. So, from a safety standpoint, if we were able to keep it, pull it back, have a more passive use of it, not encouraged use of the beach area as a beach, it's gonna be much more easy for us to police that area.
So, you patrol it, but if a 911 call comes through, Lake Forest responds, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And so do our chief hold, do you, from a, a public safety standpoint, from the city's perspective, also endorse Concept A? Do you find that preferable?
Quite honestly, as far as the parking, I don't have a preference, quite honestly. And as far as 911 comes in, I know that they, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Highland Park has an agreement with the Forest Preserve Police Department to be the police responders to the, the lakefront area. Our fire department would go, though, and a matter of fact, they were just down there a month ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, a month ago, for an issue that, they had a rule that allegedly somebody was drowning or something, and it turned out not to be, but them getting down there and finding where to go, very, very difficult for them to know where to go. So, the Forest Preserve Police Department pretty much handles the, the lakefront area there, the north end, we, it's ours, there's not much, you know, the nature preserve road takes us down there, but we don't have any, you know, activity down there, it's more down on the lakefront where there is parking. And I know I had a tour of it with the Forest Reserve Police, Highwood Police, and Highland Park Police Department, maybe three weeks ago. And I know one of Highland Park's issues is that if the parking is, is moved farther west, they're afraid that the people are gonna start parking in their neighborhoods there and start using that to access the lakefront. And we get that, well, we'll find that in the summer times, too, there, where people will park in the, the train lot down on Old Elm Road, and they'll walk up to the nature preserve and walk down that way. Hate to say they're partying on the beach, but they'll be down there on the beach. So, people find ways to get to where they're not supposed to be, is what it comes down to. We haven't responded for a police issue down there. I know our fire department has, though, at least the one time and probably more, and there is a concern on the fire department's behalf of knowing how to get where down there, because there's no landmarks. There, there's just nothing to know where to get to. The call came in, and as you can see, it's a, I forget how long of a stretch this side of the beach is, it's a big stretch of beach, and there's no way to know where you're going. So, that's a concern.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The, there are, I, I don't generally drive in there, I live pretty close by, I either walk or actually sail by on my little boat.
Oh.
So, it's, but there is, those residences are right on the beach. That must have been, down in that little, you can see that little-
Right, right.
I mean, they, they literally are like three or four condominium units that are right on the beach. It was an old boathouse, I think, or something.
Water filtration, maybe, or something like that, yeah.
Okay.
It wasn't captain's party doors. It was.
That's a phenomenal little piece of property.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
But there is a driveway that goes down there.
Yes, there is.
And it's gotta, obviously, continue to function as a driveway for those people who live there.
Right.
Boy, what a bonus for them if they get Plan A. And I just, I'm wondering how you're gonna control that. I mean, obviously, you take the parking away, but that doesn't stop people from using the road, does it?
So, yeah, it does, because if it's not public access there, this can, right around here, it can be gated with a keypad.
Is that the intent?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's gated now, it's just gated closer to the roof.
Well, it's gated right, right by them, right, where it doesn't really-
Right, so, exactly, Alderman. So we would, we would gate it. There are some, we know some of the uses there are research, people collecting information on migrating birds and things like that. So we would have the, the capacity for certain situations of, you know, small groups of saying, you know, for these three months, you have access and a tag, and you can park there and do your scientific research and collection of data. But yes, that, that would be, and as I said, in either situation where some of the current trails are, they're gonna be adjusted in, in either situation. So certainly some of that conflict that's down there, we're gonna try to engineer out either way. But what happens when, with the cars, is also the cars currently keep going down, the, the private drive-
Up at the bottom, because there's nowhere to turn around.
Exactly, and then they're backing up, and that's also, that's also a difficult situation.
I guess my other question, in, in honor of Alderman Moore's retirement-
Yes.
My other question is about process.
Yes.
I know you've had a lot of public input, I know that there's been a lot of debate about how best to do this.
Yep.
I don't know exactly where Plan A and Plan B came from in the first place. It's been presented as, take one or the other. What is the process, and ultimately, who makes this decision?
Okay, so, A and B are put out there as concepts. There's a group that has, on their own, created a Plan C. We had, excuse me, we had open house, and, and people can comment. What some people have done is they say, "Hey, you know what? We like the direction that you're going with Plan A. Maybe we would tweak these few little things, but we like, we understand what you're trying to do, we'd like that." Other people say, "You know what? We, we like B and, but we wouldn't mind changing it." There are people at the open house that said, "I don't like either of these, we don't want any parking anywhere." So, so there is a, it runs the gamut. So, our process is, is that we're still gathering information. We're gonna be collecting some more data. We have been collecting data on, on parking use. And so, one of the challenges is, is where is the parking being used? How much is actually being used now? Are we not utilizing the, the resources that we've already put in? Are we not taking advantage or sort of directing people to take advantage? So anyone who bird watches or walks their dog, for the most part, I don't have a dog, but I'm a bird watcher, most of those people are gonna get out, and they're gonna walk that whole preserve. They're gonna do the whole thing. And so, one of the things, we want to get some of those people, so many of them are parking here, they, they don't need to park there. They could be parking there, they could be parking there. So we do want to kind of shift some behavior, and it's not gonna change for many people, it's not gonna change their experience there at all, but we can use existing infrastructure. But we are gonna be collecting additional data over the summer about parking and, and parking use, and we have been collecting at different times a day, how many cars are in the parking lot, those sorts of things. We are also, Commissioner Rumel mentioned our budget today, and one of the things that we've slated for and hope to be successful, because some of it needs to be private monies, and that is a bio blitz. And actually, if that occurs, some of you may recall that there was a bio blitz at Middle Fork Savanna. Gosh, it might have been eight or 10 years ago at this point, but it's a, for those of you who don't know, it's 24 hours, and you have plant, bug, bird, every sort of peoples out there collecting information. They usually do this in the Amazon and places like that. And they see what actually is there, and we find species that we didn't know. That is planned for Fort Sheridan. So we also, we already have a lot of data on breeding bird surveys and the sorts of, the sorts of uses, who, what are the plants and animals that are using that? So we're gonna get additional information on that. The plan would be then, in the fall, we're gonna pull all this information together. It may be, in the end, that there is some, something else that is not a Plan A or B, but as I said to other people, we need to start somewhere. We need to have something for people to respond to. And then it's gonna be up to the Forest Preserve Board. We're gonna need to, in the end, decide what happens there.
So this is like, not a decision of the executive director?
No, no.
The board has to-
It's the, the 21 board members.
And there's, and there's gonna be voting going on?
Yep.
And public meetings?
Yep.
To discuss it and all that, okay.
Yep, that all, that all, that all continues, yep. And if you'd like to be on the email list about that, we'd be happy to provide you with that.
I get enough emails.
Okay, but I, I wanted to offer-
Hey, Ann.
Yes.
My personal preference is Plan A for some of the reasons that Alderman Waldeck recited. But I see that Openlands also endorses that, and I don't want to put John Santell on the spot, but I'd be curious as to why Openlands prefers Plan A as well.
Well, then I guess we'll have John come up.
So I brought some remarks, but, yeah, I'm obviously privileged to be president of Openlands, but I also live near the Lakeshore Preserve, I live in southeast Lake Forest. And so I'd like to offer some, some words that have been closely considered by Lake Forest Openlands in our endorsement of Concept A. So, I thought it was interesting that Alderman, Reisenberg, and Waldeck talked about preserve versus people, and I don't necessarily view it that way. I mean, our conservation mission, our organization's conservation mission is to preserve and restore, but also connect people to nature, and I think that's really what the Lake County Forest Preserve is trying to do in this regard. We are keenly aware of the value that Fort Sheridan Preserve has, not only to myriad residents in Lake Forest, but also to residents throughout Lake County. But Fort Sheridan really is an area of statewide significance with some exceptionally fragile and unique ecosystems that should be valued and restored as a natural area for all to experience. And we do also believe, though, on the contrary, that Fort Sheridan's highest value is not that of a beachfront park, and that many envision it could become that over time. We believe, and we've looked at it closely, that, that Concept A appropriately provides access for all to experience the lakefront vistas, but does not compromise that special aesthetic and natural value for the majority of users who do enjoy the preserve as a place of solitude, learning, and passive recreation. So to deliver on that promise of creating that unique outdoor experience, we think we, we should redistribute the parking away from being a central feature of the preserve. More simply stated, we think when you're building a preserve, you should build parking around a preserve, not build a preserve around parking. We always like to take the long view on these things and try to do so, and so, we believe Concept A supports the Lakeshore Preserve for passive recreational enjoyment, not as a beachfront park, and it creates a nature preserve that complements, yet differentiates this lakefront from the many other shoreline access points in our area. And that question was raised, you know, so, we understand that this issue of access is a perceived issue for some. Concept A does allow access for all, but without compromising those values we, I just talked about. Many forget that there are several other close by areas that provide points of access for similar lakeshore view. To your question, Mr. Reisenberg, in Highland Park, you can experience lakeshore views from Central Park, Rosewood Park, Millard Park, and Moraine Park. As Ms. Main mentioned, you can also access the incredible bluff from Openlands Lakeshore Preserve, which is just three blocks south of Fort Sheridan. And of course, we all know that there's dramatic views of the, of the bluff from our park, Forest Park, as well as you can also go to Waukegan and Illinois State Beach State Park. In terms of delivering that promise of a great nature preserve, again, parking should not really be a central feature. And by relocating parking closer to Fort Sheridan and away from the interior, we think will actually enhance the incredible lakeshore vistas for visitors. So, lakeshore views will be improved without walking all the way from Sheridan Road, then the first thing you see is a parking lot sitting there in front of your lakeshore view. So we think that the paved path will get people there efficiently and easily, whether you're, have a stroller or a wheelchair or whatever. We also think that, that Concept A appropriately restores the lakeshore to woodland habitat for migrating bird species, while still, as Ann Main talked about, maintaining 35% grassland and that view corridor to the lake. People tend to forget that this land was cleared to be an airstrip, it was originally a woodland. And for those interested in experiencing grassland habitat, and those, those people are out there and bird watchers, well, Middle Fork Savanna is far superior and is only 10 minutes up the road. And Rollin Savanna, again, is, is a fantastic place to do so, it's a little farther. Finally, the state of Illinois's Downstate Forest Preserve District Act states that "Any Forest Preserve District shall preserve and protect the natural forests, together with their flora and fauna in their natural state and condition." We believe that Concept A meets the mandated mission of our Forest Preserve District to restore Fort Sheridan to its highest natural condition by protecting the sensitive lakeshore and bluff to enjoy now and into the future. So, we respectfully ask the city council to endorse the, the proposed resolution supporting Concept A. And so, it's an important issue for our community, I think.
One other question for you.
Sure.
The crosshatching on here is, that's McCormick Ravine?
The, the crosshatching to the north is McCormick Ravine, yes. To the south is Openlands, not Lake Forest Openlands, Chicago Openlands.
So how synergetic would that be to have McCormick Ravine contiguous to this?
It's very synergetic. And when you're talking about restoring this property, you really can't separate the restoration we're going on at Fort Sheridan from what's going, you know, hopefully will happen at McCormick Ravine. They're very tied together. They're really one habitat.
Yeah, that's what I suspect. Thank you.
Back, back on the subject of parking.
Yes.
I read, I don't recall if it was in the material or, or from another source, that parking's amply available, that you, you haven't had much experience with no place to park.
That's true.
So, I, I guess I find it interesting that people would, I suppose if you don't want to walk so far, you would drive as far east as you could.
Yeah, I, I liken it to sort of the shopping malls. When someone go, they're gonna go to the store, and if they can park right here, they'll park right there, unless they're trying to get their 10,000 steps on their Fitbit, and then they might park a little bit further back. But, you know, I don't think we should have, I don't think we wanna, and I know you guys think this, we don't want to pave everything for that, for that one day.
Right.
You know, and because we would never, you know, think of all these other places. Now, I was chastised someplace else, but this is such a rare habitat, and I say to other people, "You know what? If you go to Zion, or Yosemite, or Yellowstone, the National Park Service is grappling with these same things, and they have changed access at those parks." And someone said, "Well, those are a lot bigger." I'm like, "You're right, they are bigger, but we still have a lot of people." This is only 250 acres. That's, sounds big, but, but it's not, not if you're funneling everybody to one spot. So, that's a concern I have.
Thank you.
Did, did I answer your question, Alderman?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions that I could answer?
Any other questions, Tim?
You touched briefly on the Americans with Disabilities Act and its impact on this project. Could you, that was kind of a brief comment, could you give us a little bit more there? Is there a significant difference between A and B as it relates to Americans with disability access?
No. Not in terms of going down to the waterfront, because the grade to the waterfront in, currently and in any situation, can, I believe, and perhaps Bob Kiley can help me here, I believe it's a 5% grade, if anyone can help me there. I think it's a-
I think it's more than that.
No, 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 I think an ADA has to be, like, no more than a 5% grade. This is a much steeper grade. My, my point to that and, was that, some people say, "Well, disabled people aren't going to be able to get down to the beach if you move the parking." My point simply was that someone who's truly disabled can't get down to the beach right now, because it is not now and can never be made a 5% grade to get down there. Did that answer your question?
Well-
Yeah.
So then the extent of requirements on your part are just reserved parking spots?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ann? For Mike, for John? Anyone?
All right, thank you.
Ann, thank you very much. Thanks, Mike, Ty. I would then ask for the council to approve the proposed resolution endorsing Concept A of the 2015 Fort Sheridan Master Plan. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
I'll take one of those as a second.
Second.
Do we need a roll call or voice vote satisfactory? Voice vote satisfactory? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none is unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, additional items for council discussion, any this evening? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.